You can just leave it now.
And then just hit that to end it?
They said, yeah, here at Fred Myers we have it, but it's in the pet compartment. This is what I bought.
Oh, to tease your cat.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can play with your cat.
Oh, I never would have looked for it there.
Well, now I can't.
Is it working? I saw it light up though.
Yeah, I know.
There's no caps around, it's not working.
Well, it was working.
There, so I see.
But there are different little symbols that come up on it.
Oh, really?
Like what?
A cat, a star.
Really?
Let's see here.
Just don't point it in any airplane.
Well, it's not doing it now, it's just going to the pointer.
I've got it.
But it did have, there's five different little symbols.
Really?
Yeah.
Always the same color though?
Yeah.
Red.
Yeah.
That'd be cool, those different colors.
Yeah, I'm told it.
Yeah. Hi, Joe.
Is she home?
Yeah.
Oh, she is, oh, good.
Yeah, don't get her to do anything.
No, I was just gonna check on her.
Oh.
How long has she been home?
Since Monday.
Oh, good, good. You're taking good care of her?
Oh, I don't know. I'm taking orders.
Well, you've done that most of your life.
Does she have a bell?
No, it's a string, a chain. She got used to hospital attendants. Just in the nico time.
I can't get anything out of it.
Oh, you have very thick shoes.
Yes.
Living among those neighbors, it's a short-term, this is horrendous.
Okay, let's get started. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
I'll second it.
Allen favorite?
Hi.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I should point out that the minutes suggest that I'm present. But I wasn't present, barely present now.
But you were, you did a nice job while you were here.
And also, it doesn't indicate that you're vice chair.
Oh, well.
Okay, any corrections?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find where it is again.
There's some non-sentence.
Yeah. Okay, on page six of seven. Kerr made a motion to recommend the five-year unlimited permits and lottery system. No, I did not. I made a recommendation to suspend, to get rid of the five-year unlimited permits and lottery system. So, opposite.
Yeah.
And I question, is that the correct motion that you made? I didn't realize it said suspend them for two years to allow, I thought it was... Yeah, that was the correct, yeah.
Okay, and then also, under authorization for, authorization for vice chair to sign the appropriate order.
Right.
It should be chair. And then also, move to have the vice chair sign the appropriate order. So, here again, it's...
Okay.
Yeah.
And Risley couldn't have voted under voting.
Yes.
Okay, any other...
Maybe the vice chair is supposed to do that because of...
What's that?
Maybe the actions are so vicious that...
Could be. Okay, any other corrections? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
So, move.
Second.
Allen favorite?
Hi.
Okay, then, this is a work session for the planning commission, and I'll just turn it over to you, Chad.
Okay, yeah, I just have a small kind of presentation to frame some of this, but then we can, the rest of it, we're just gonna open up. But yeah, hopefully, we can talk about different things. I didn't receive any, hopefully, no one sent me any priorities to add to the list, because I didn't even receive any. Not to say that, there's a lot of emails coming in this week, so I might have missed something, but I didn't receive any, but we can just add to them if there's other things. Clay called in, and he was just too busy, couldn't make it tonight, but he did say that he will listen, we're gonna send him the tape, and so he'll, if he has any comments or anything to add, he'll be happy to send that on. So, we changed this, this is from last month, and we changed those dates. I can't remember actually what days we changed them to, but they should be in the minutes, actually.
They're in the minutes, and so that's, I don't think that's correct.
No, those are the ones that it was scheduled to be.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm pretty sure that we had it here that...
November twenty-sixth.
Right. November twenty-sixth.
And December seventeenth.
And December seventeenth, okay.
Yeah.
November twenty-first?
November twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
And December seventeenth.
Okay, and then the rest...
You're both Tuesdays.
Yeah.
Stay the same. Though, what I wanted to kind of frame this tonight with is that this is out of the planning commission's powers and duties from the, our ordinances, our code, the municipal code. And the powers and duties of the planning commission shall include the following, develop and maintain the comp plan, investigate and make recommendations regarding the implementation of the comp plan, prepare and review land development regulations, including but not limited to zoning, subdivision, land petition, and make recommendations to the council. And then, of course, that leads into what we actually do during zoning. So, this is out of Title seventeen and a zoning ordinance, and it says periodically, as local goals and needs change, new information is obtained, zoning ordinance that is codified in this title should be updated. Purpose of the zoning ordinance amendment process is to provide a method for carefully evaluating potential changes to ensure that they are beneficial to the city. An amendment to the text of the ordinance codified in this title may be initiated by a city council, planning commission, and then personnel need for amendment. So, the reason I bring this up is because, you know, you guys can initiate these changes yourself, so I know it just seems to me that the last couple, the only couple I've been involved in, it's been, it seems to me been directed from the city council to you guys, and they haven't gone so smoothly, at least from my perspective. And so, I think a lot of that is why I like to set priorities yearly with you guys and say, let's, what are we gonna try to accomplish this year, and set our goals as a group. And sure, we're gonna get direction from the council, and that's, that's part of your role, but the other is also to, you know, review, okay? At least once a year, review what we've done, and then review those ordinances that we're having trouble with. I'm gonna be your conduit for giving you feedback on what some of that is. And so, I did a little bit of analysis, I'm a data kind of guy, and this is from nineteen ninety-two to twenty eighteen, and you can see, these are zoning, comprehensive plan amendments down to just a zoning amendment, a zoning change, variances, vacancy...
Vacancy, what's that mean?
Vacation, sorry. Yeah, and then, I don't know, SV...
What, vacation? Oh, vacation rentals, okay.
No, no, vacation of a right-of-way.
Oh, okay.
Okay. The subdivision, short, setback reduction, right-of-way, plan development, let's see if I can get most of these. A lot of these are, let's see, yeah, I don't know, maybe a parking variance, I'm not sure. I can look those up, but anyhow, the major ones, if you, and you can see down at the end there, our zoning amendments there, we do a lot of variances, and we do a lot of setback reductions. And if you wanna look at how those stack up in those same ninety-two to two thousand and eighteen, you can see those are the ones that are kind of playing out, setback reduction, variances, and zoning.
Where does the fourteen percent variance?
So, the, that's probably under U-ten, maybe, is it a variance, or do you all have conditional use permits?
Well, I've spent a lot of time since I started on.
I think maybe conditional use permits. Yeah, that measure forty-nine, there's a few of those that, a lot line, some of that stuff just is administratively done. And so, anyhow, I just wanted to see what, where we're, what we're doing, and you can see how many we did back in the nineties. Now, we're averaging just about one and a half per meeting, land use actions, okay? And possibly even a little less than that, okay? And so, from the comp plan, this is straight from our comp plan, the general philosophy was prepared, and the things I wanna point out here is this one right here. The comprehensive plan, zoning subdivision, or it's a not fixed document, although the planning period for the city is generally considered to be to the year two thousand. That might be a key that we might need to do some more kind of comprehensive plan.
Well, we've got a long fine until now.
Yeah.
It's only nineteen more years.
Exactly. And so, history and organization, same thing, you know, you can see here ninety-eight, eighty-four, eighty-six, and a lot of the language in there, a lot of the maps. Barb asked me, she gets the gold star, I told her, she was the one who asked for these documents, so I also wanted to show you guys that, since Barb asked, oop, wrong one, you can now go to our website, okay? And you can type in here, comp, if it'll let me type in here, comp, I wonder if it's comp plan will come up, maybe comprehensive. And it should come up, let's see, see if this one takes me there. Now, if that's just the original, let me see, I think it's comprehensive. Yeah, here you go. So, comprehensive plan, so we put the comprehensive plan in there, the comprehensive plan maps, all of this information is now in here as well. The, this big document here is the background report, adopted in seventy-nine, and then the appendices, and everything that's been updated since is kind of in paper format. So, that's available online for your pleasure.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. I'm gonna try to get, start reading it myself. Okay, and, and so the purpose, the purpose of Canada Beach Comprehensive Plan is to control and promote development, which is most desirable. My favorite thing, though, the character of Canada Beach is a difficult concept to define, is made up of many factors, and I have never seen this in any other comprehensive plan. Canada Beach is not without controversy. It is a community in which citizens are concerned enough to become involved in all phases of city affairs, and this involvement often leads to conflict. The intention of the plan is to attempt to draw together the concerns of the entire community, while the policies, guidelines, and recommendations are not unanimously agreed upon, they represent a statement which the city can use to guide its future growth. Seventy-nine, that line changed.
That hasn't changed.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we're not changing that.
When you say community...
Yeah.
Do you mean, are you talking about the community of people who live here all the time, or are you talking about a community of tourists as well?
I think they're talking about the entire community. I mean, that's, that's what most comprehensive plans are supposed to represent, the community. Now, you have a different view of community, as Joe does, and that's why we're all sitting here at the table. We're never gonna agree on what that means, community. I'm sure mine's different than yours and everyone's. So, I think that's why we do this, and I think that's why they wrote this. I think that not everyone agrees on the entire, what the entire community is, and so, there's gonna be conflict, but there can be consensus.
Yeah, and you know, when we started the sculptures without walls program, the arts program...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that, the people that voted for what they really liked the most was visitors that came to town, they didn't, they weren't living here, and I would imagine that that validating the majority of the people, were people from out of town rather than people that lived here.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's different ways.
Well, usually, if you don't live here, you can't vote.
Yeah, I know, but in this case, that's what we, that's how we set it up, though, was that visitors could vote on, on all the sculptures that we had.
But those were ballot boxes at each of the sites, right? The time when you had the sculpture without walls, and you had the art here, and you had people come in and look at it, that was community members, right? Yeah, that was different.
I mean, when we redid the city hall, that, that was definitely the people that lived here. So, yeah, it depended on, yeah, what we were doing that year.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, that's a great point, and so, I mean, we're gonna be talking about that a lot as we go through this process, and that's gonna be part of your, every time you bring up a comprehensive plan, and especially, I'll talk about here in a second, what we're, kind of the process. So, nineteen seventy-nine to twenty sixteen, this, I took every single citation, everything out of our comprehensive plan, and so, anything in blue is an original citation. So, how much that is still original, you can see quite a good portion from nineteen seventy-nine is still probably, I'd say, quarter, maybe a little bit less. But you can see ninety-seven, I mean, nineteen seventy-nine still is the majority of what we base our comprehensive plan on, and you can see, it's getting less and less frequent that we visit and revisit the comprehensive plan. Really haven't done a major one since nineteen ninety-eight. That's twenty years ago. That's a long time.
Well, it's similar to the Bible.
Yeah, exactly.
It gives authority over time.
And so, what does the state expect? Comp plan, as it's informally called, has three main elements, inventory of local land uses and resources, goal and policy statements that indicate local objectives over a specific period, and guidance on how to achieve them, and detailed map that shows desired uses for each property throughout the entire locale. So, we went before the city council, kind of asked them at the, one of their last meetings, and kind of during the work session, kind of drew out what I anticipated over the next probably three years, and how much, something like this would cost. Usually, you'll do a visioning exercise first with the community, and that often involves surveys or, you know, choosing how you wanna do that.
Is that fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, four.
To do a visioning exercise?
Yeah, and so, I had kind of reached out to other communities, and sisters, I asked them, and that's about what they paid, forty-six, I think, is what they ended up paying. And, you know, going rates right now, it really is kind of amazing to me as well, so I understand. What really is amazing is calling up Ben, I don't know if, I know Barb was there when I presented this. So, I called up Ben, Oregon, 'cause I know a fellow that works over there, and they spent two million dollars to do their comprehensive plan. And I also called other places around, you know, the nation, and others that I've worked in, and other, so that's where these rates come from for a community our size. But Ben spent two million, and then I called the, next, the next day I called, I had a conference called Lexington, Kentucky, and they did all of theirs in-house, cost them just that time. And so, there's the, there's huge extremes in any of those things. But I can tell you, you know, really, if you're gonna do all of these together, you're gonna be looking at probably a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand, depending on how broad or expansive you want them to be.
What's the ordinances part? I don't understand, to rewrite the ordinances or to review them?
Yeah, so what will happen is you'll build the vision of where, what you wanna change, or where you guys wanna go, right? You'll do a, and often, that very first step of that is to do what you just said, review, review what you've already got, okay? Where are we missing, what's our gaps, kind of analysis, what do we need to do? And that can be done in conjunction with that vision, because that then will tell you, okay, this is where we wanna go, these ordinances can't get us there in these ways. So, you do a comprehensive plan, that rekinders, rewrites a lot of this, a lot of this, like I said, you know, you've got data in here of the background, kind of population, housing, natural resources, some of it hasn't been updated since ninety-six, ninety-eight, you know, just not even...
Yeah, like the bed and breakfast.
You can just get, yeah, exactly. And so, there's ordinances like that. I found one of those is probably a week, where I'm just going, really? And so, then you do, they're wanting to do a strategic plan, you know, that's, some, some do that, others don't, so I put that in there. But then, yeah, so you come up with this vision, where you wanna go, you do your comprehensive plan changes, because that's your thirty thousand foot level, then how do you wanna get there? That's usually down to that ten thousand foot level as your ordinance changes. And so, you gotta actually have the vehicle to get you there, and that's your ordinances. And so, as all that's going on, of course, then you've got state decisions and things like that that may also shape that. House Bill two thousand and one is still moving through, this is the one that's forcing communities over ten thousand to do more housing, middle housing is what they're requiring, kind of getting rid of single-family housing, and requirement of housing in all districts, all residential districts, and more movement towards this, which I can't believe wouldn't in fact filter down to us here fairly soon. So, House Bill two thousand and three is just another kind of arm of that, and then, you guys had brought up Senate Bill six twenty-one, and that died, that is, at least this year, that's the one about the short-term rules, and so that did not go through, or it's not active anymore. So, on that comprehensive plan, the city council said, yes, we'll give you fifty thousand dollars for the coming year, and they do wanna see us do a review, probably in the fall of our plans, and then move into a visioning, probably around the first of the year after we get the contract in and everything.
So, like, all that money, like the fifty thousand dollars for ordinances, does that go to attorneys to draft the ordinances, is that where it's going?
Well, usually, it'll go to planners, I mean, there's, not me, I mean, a consultant. We'll hire some consultants, and they'll work with us to draft some new ordinances to fit where... I'm not a big fan myself, but, you know...
We spend a lot of money on it.
So much BFs.
And, and so, anyhow, you will have my recommendations as well, and I'm, I'm, I understand that as well, I've worked with quite a few over the years, I think there's great ones, and, but there's, majority is not, not the best. And I, and I've done so much of this that I think I can help us save some money along the way and do a lot of the work. I just put together the events, that special event, so I'll be getting that to you next week, it's, the department heads are looking through it this week, and so, I'll get you that draft next week, so you guys can start looking at that.
So, when this vision is envisioned, is it gonna be based on surveys that come out of Massachusetts, or South Carolina, or Texas, or some other place that has nothing to do with Canada Beach, as happened the last two times?
See, that wasn't a vision, you guys just did a survey of national surveys.
I know, but whenever you do something like that, it has, it has some output that, that either comes back to bite the people who do it, or the people whom, you know...
No.
But at any rate...
My recommendation, same as yours, will be, we build our own vision, and we help build whatever survey instrument they're gonna use, or whatever. And I, and I really wanted, that's why I brought this all before you tonight, is because as that ordinances show, everything's gotta go through you guys, so you guys are gonna be one of the driving forces in all this work that we're gonna be doing. Some communities put together a special steering committee for these kind of projects. I don't know what this city council is gonna want from this, but often, even if they do that, they will usually ask either the planning commission to be part of that, or at least two or three members kind of as liaisons to that community. But I've worked with some that have just used a planning commission.
Why can't we just have you be the consultant?
Yeah. I'll take that two hundred and fifty thousand.
My experience with...
Well, now you've increased the price.
My experience with consultants over many industries over many years is the management brings them in, 'cause they don't trust what lower management says, consultant goes to lower management and says, what do you recommend? And they recommend, they go back to management, senior management, and you're paid fifty million.
Well, you know, the goal, I think the true goal, or the real reason communities hire consultants is that, you know, they're the outside experts, and they can bring in other perspect, just traditionally, they can bring in other perspectives that we may not usually see, but they also can take a lot of the heat that may arise during it. So, that's, those are the two main goals, why they use perspect, consultants, and, you know, I'm happy if you guys just wanna talk ten minutes about how we don't like consultants, I mean, I do, I'm not a big consultant family either, but that's really what you'll hear from them.
Well, I brought up the point about the recent surveys as an example of dependence on consultants gone amok. I mean, I, when I, first of all, the methodology was screwed. Secondly, there were people in this community, including myself, who had run major polling and survey operations, and, you know, I looked at that thing, and I couldn't believe anybody bought it.
Yeah. Yeah, and I wanna, I'm gonna look at all those past surveys, 'cause, yeah, I saw, when I was interviewing or did my research for the position, I looked at that, it was still up there online, probably still is, but I looked at the past one, and it looked like even in the strategic plan that they, city council had done, they mentioned that quite heavily, and they talk about it, and even in the last couple retreat exercises. So, but I, from my understanding, they moved away from it, so...
Well, there's some new people in the council, too.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I mean, part of, for years, the city council's always had, at the beginning of the year, they have a retreat where they're setting out priorities and a vision, and so it's like, it's, I keep hearing the same thing and I've gone to a few of them to listen to, but it's sort of like we're duplicating what city councils are already doing.
Well, the, I did want to update you a couple things. The four-done has been pushed off till September, so they will not look at that till September. And then the tree was passed, so the tree ordinance is through. Short-term rentals will be a work session at the next city council work session. Any other ones that are... I think those are the main ones right now.
Has a dagger been put through the heart of the parking study?
No.
It's still out there someplace.
Well, so that's, so that's kind of one, you know, he, the issues that I brought up and put on the sheet here, you know, that's one of the things. So I, Joe, that you brought that up, I'll go ahead, I updated, I'll update you guys on that, I had the guy from ODOT come in this past week and met with him about, I don't know if you guys know the transportation grant that they've tried to get three years in a row and have failed to get. Well, this year, you know, he's promising we're going to get it this year and so we're going to take one more shot at it, that's, you know, it averages about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, I think is the average for anyone who gets these grants. I think that Mark had put in for like a hundred and sixty or...
Is this a grant to do a transportation study?
It's a drink, but it, but...
By a consultant?
By a consultant.
By one of those?
But it's a transportation engineer and so at least what...
Go downtown, you don't need to do a transportation study, just go downtown during the summer.
And that's the whole thing, you know, Mark had not written it in as doing it with the parking management, so I'm going to write this grant and so I'm going to ask for both in the same one, because I don't think a transportation study is worth its salt unless it has some...
Is it showing where cars are coming from, how long they're staying, when they're going? Is that basically what it is?
What it will do though, it will allow us to write, get other grants, that's what you have to have a transport, we, we are one of the only communities in the entire state that doesn't have a transportation plan. And the ODOT guy said, I asked him, I said, do you know any others? And he couldn't think of any others. And so we're due to get one and we need one just because what happens is you go for any other federal grants or other grants and that's the first thing they ask for and we get points, bonus points to get another grant.
Justifies your request for my department.
Yeah, so, so that's really one of the main keys is why we really need that. And so that's, I've started that parking study there and parking management, those two items, I've started, we have our new code official. So as she goes out, I'm having her take section by section of the city and at least mapping where we have parking signage and no parking zones and all that, and then I'm going to update our GIS system and try to do a better kind of analysis of how much parking and right-of-way we are actually using or not using appropriately, and so we can see how much capacity we really have in this town for parking and, and that's really where it stands right now, we don't even really know, we've got lots of alleys, we've got lots of right-of-way that are just not being used or not underutilized. And so the goal in working with Public Works is to say, hey, we need to have some kind of strategy on, hey, if we're not using these alleys or we're not using these right-of-ways, let's, let's figure out how to use them and get some parking out of these things where we can. So it'll be, it'll be a long process, probably a year, year and a half, but that's another one of the things that I'm wanting to do.
So I, I just wanted to mention, and this has been on my mind for a long time, part of this is coming out of what the reporters have written in the Gazette, and that is, they were addressing Warren Way and Hemlock, that intersection, and, you know, in the small little article, they were talking about four-way stops and da-da-da-da and that sort of thing. But when Mark was addressing that a year or two ago, he was saying that there is enough space there to have a roundabout. And, and to me, that makes much more sense, having a roundabout than having a four-way stop or any of the other options that they, and I'm not seeing that.
Yeah.
But that's something that I would be pushing.
Yeah, well, I think that that's...
And, 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 you know, they keep coming back to the fact, oh, that's going to cost over twenty, well, that intersection's going to be there forever and it's not going to get, the traffic's not going to be any less than what it is now.
Yeah, well, no, that's a great point, and I think that's why I want a transportation study and plan, because ODOT will, and the engineers, the consultants that did that Warren Way intersection, you know, you can tell that I think maybe their preference is probably for a roundabout, it's a long, long term, it's the best solution, they think. But there's, there's cheaper ones to get us kind of partially there, and so, yeah, I, I get you.
Yeah, what we have now is a temporary.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions about this. First of all, is four-done, four-done grading considered done?
The four-done management, it's not, it's, for at this level, it's at city council, will be in September, but for you guys, that's up to you guys, I mean, do you guys want to make more changes or whatever? I wasn't really here for that process.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Because we spent so much time on it. And the other thing, we've got a marijuana zoning, see marijuana shops everywhere, what left, what has left to be done?
Well, so when you guys did your, the initial, or you guys may not have been involved in that, but when they originally did the marijuana legislation for the city, they really didn't do any zoning, all they did was just say it could be anywhere in the commercial district. You know, other areas will have, you know, more overlay or something, you know, a certain area, in other words, or restrictions between, the distance between them and things like that, which can also, you know, only allow certain ones. But, but we don't have anything like that and I've now, I think, have five lux, land use compatibility studies, which is that first thing you do to state to say you want a pot, pot shot. We now have five that are going to be opening up here.
In Cannon Beach?
So we have the five zero trees, right? We have the one you, you all saw down here in the Cannon Beach West, oh no, DRB, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the designer...
Across from Sea Level.
This one right here, yeah, across from Sea Level, this one across the street here, which will be opening soon. There's one down by the candy store.
Right, across from candy store.
They open one, what, who, but why do we care?
And one up north. Why would you care?
I mean, there's bars too and, I mean, there's just as much regulation for marijuana as there was for alcohol, so by attrition, a couple of them will drop off because there'll be too much competition, they won't make, be making any money. I mean, people aren't going to come here to buy marijuana, they can buy it all over in Portland and see, you know...
Yeah, I, I do think the market will have a big effect over the next year or two, but the question is, do you want to allow them everywhere? I mean, that's up to you guys, and that's, that's why...
Seaside doesn't have any on Broadway, that was in their regulations.
Yeah, you can put, that's why I'm saying you can have certain areas where you just don't...
I think that's...
I think this one is going to be weeded out on its own.
Oh, clever.
It just seems that there's so many important things here and that seems, I just can't get excited about that. It'll drop off by itself.
Well, that's why I put it out here, so you guys can discuss and prioritize, so...
That, what's his name, who has the one across from Bruce's?
Nicholson.
Nicholson, yeah.
Rimble? Where the purple moon used to be?
No, no, it's a little historic house.
Yeah, that one in the far north end, I didn't bring that one up actually.
Just north of...
Doesn't look like a store, it looks like...
Okay, I know which one it is.
Looks like a dump, yes, yes.
So that's a good point though, Lisa, I put everything that I, these aren't from the, my, this isn't my wish list, this is really what I'm hearing and getting feedback from, from calls and the community and these are things that are issues in, from what I get feedback daily, so that's why that's there. So there's a few ones here though that I did want to touch base before you guys start talking about. So I'm just going to start from the top, you guys know that I, I think there's quite a few short-term rental that we didn't really get to that, you know, I don't know if you want to jump right back into it, but it's, I think there's other concerns there that we did not really address in these changes. We may want to let it play out till our two years is up and then do it all then, but I just wanted to bring that up, that I know a lot of you guys felt, at least I, what I hear, heard, that these were, these three points were not the points that you guys would have thought about and it's definitely not the ones I hear about. Events and outdoor merchandising, like I said, I'm drafting that, you guys, that'll be next up. Affordable housing, okay, so we don't really have an affordable housing ordinance and I, I think that we, it is a concern that keeps coming up, it's almost at every council level priority, it's, I had a meeting with two different parties over the last two weeks on affordable housing opportunities and, you know, it just really comes down to what are you guys going to do for us kind of thing, instead of having an ordinance, and that's how most, that most communities will have an ordinance that kind of spells those, what we...
Out of all the things on the list, I think that's the most vital in Cannon Beach.
I'm understanding you said you had parties, you mean developers? Develop, oh, developers who want to build short-term housing. Okay, not because they care about short-term affordable housing, because they want to make money?
Well, I don't think that's true, I think that they need, you know, everyone that's approached me knows the need and it's their workers, a lot of them.
Yes, that's what I was going to say.
They do not have a place for their workers anymore, there's, there's people, restaurants and things that can't open as much as they'd like and they don't have shifts because they don't have the staff, they just can't open.
You know, there's, there's a relationship between wages and available labor.
Right.
And, you know, if you pay the wages, the labor shows.
Yeah, well, I think that's part of the point, but I think their other point, I've worked in too many of these communities where that's not true, they can't, they cannot drive an hour and a half to get here for a ship that's...
I talked to a girl who works, a gal who works at Mose and she drives Claire in from Jewel, and I'm thinking to myself, you've got to be kidding me.
I mean, that's the thing, you reach a point, like, it just doesn't make sense.
At the same time, understand that a big, big, this big city like Seattle, thirty-minute commute would be a blessing.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, people commute an hour and a half, two hours.
In bumper, to bumper, yeah.
Yeah, so we've got some, you know, I mean, well, that's a big topic, but it's something that I really think that, like you all said, it is one of our top things. So I'm just going to run through and just kind of talk about what I've heard and then you guys, I'm going to turn over to you guys to talk the rest of it.
Can I just ask another question about that, about people who approached you about affordable housing? I'm just curious, were they complaining that the way our zoning is and the way our, our rules are, you know, that they're foreclosed from building what they want to build?
There's limitations, yeah, they can't...
They don't want the limitations?
Well, I think they would accept some limitations, but I think what it does is it, it hampers the, you know, also hampers how many units we can get and that's, that's one of the issues as well, so. I mean, that's just what, that's what I'm hearing, that it's, it's a concern, you're not going to get what, perfectly what you want, you'll never get it, you have got to have different tools and yes, you're going to have to, both sides will have to have some give and take.
But you're hearing from developers?
I'm hearing from not just developers either, so, you know, like I said, I sit down at least quarterly with restaurants and short-term rental, you know, the operators and managers of a lot of these organizations, so it's not just developers that are complaining, there's issues and, you know, there's solutions too, you know, like Sun Valley, they have the dormitories, you know, for the seasonal help. So communities step up in different ways and different communities step up in different ways, so there's lots of tools out there, we're just not using very many of them, and so we need to start looking at that issue. Because really, right now, we don't have an ordinance that we can point anything to, that's another kind of risk concern as well, because the more you do without an ordinance, the more we're putting the city at risk that someone could sue over, you know, disparity in the way we treat this one as opposed to the other.
That's true.
So then the next thing was that transportation parking, that's all one kind of thing. Oh, the accessory dwelling language, I kind of brought this up a little bit during the short-term rental, and I'm not real happy, this goes into what Lisa was saying about bed and breakfast, yeah, it's our terms for units and we're getting pushed more and more, and this happens in most resort communities. An accessory dwelling unit, well, you know, is that the same thing as a duplex? Can I make my attic into a guest house or a accessory dwelling unit and what are the standards on all that? So each one of those terms that you go, that we live by, which are, you know, cannot have a, must have a full kitchen or whatever, those kind of things matter when you start getting more and more pressure to do these kind of things, so. And, and also to draw those lines for you guys, so, which I think one thing that our ordinances does great, which a lot of communities don't, is you guys have that accessory dwelling unit cannot be used as a short-term rental, a lot of areas I've worked in, that's not the case and so it's kind of gets, you know, sometimes they try to do two short-term rentals, one on the main house, one on the accessory dwelling, and so it can get really kind of complicated in how you do that, so I just wanted to kind of clean that up and define that better as with the bed and breakfasts and all those that kind of involved in that. So then the other is, oh, design review, okay, so if we make changes to design review standards, it would go through you guys, so that's why that's one there. That's a big project if we decide to do that, but it's something that is also needed because quite frankly, that ordinance is not being, hasn't been used administratively proper in the past and so it needs to be changed.
Can you explain what you mean by that?
If you read what a minor modification is, I would challenge you guys to interpret it the same way that it's being used right now. And so a minor, by the way, that it's written, is for some, a plan that's already been approved and so they want to come back and make a change to that plan, okay? Well, they've been, they've interpreted historically here as every plan that they've ever approved can come back for a minor modification, in other words, so if I, if I'm changing something on my structure and I don't think it's too big of a change, I can just come in and ask the chair, is, do you agree this is minor modification? And then it's the chair's decision to say yes or no on that. And that was really written, if you look at the ordinance, it's written for, okay, you've accepted this new plan, you've got this, while you're, while you're making or, you know, gearing up or you're doing the work on that plan to, those improvements on site, well, you can make some minor change on that while you're doing it. But it's not for something that was accepted in nineteen ninety-nine and then to come back and do it.
And, and minor modifications, is it clearly defined or not?
It's not.
It's not defined.
No, it's not.
Oh, goodness.
And so it's, it's, it, to me, I'm not comfortable with that.
I mean, I was chair for seven years and it was, I mean, Reymar left it up to me, here's, here's what they want to do, do you consider it a minor or a major? If it was a minor, then I would say go ahead and have them do it, if it was a major, then they'd go back to the whole board.
So it was really subjective?
Yes.
And dependent on one person?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and much more subjective than I'm comfortable with at all, and I've already told our attorney that, you know, I told Bill, I said, you know... And I've already told our attorney that, you know, that I told Bill, I said, you know, one of the first things I'd like to change is just, even if we just change that part and makes, you know, clarify what's administratively or, yeah, so, anyhow.
Well, the whole philosophy of the design review board is qualitative and fuzzy and arty and.
Right, and I would prefer honestly, and that's a discussion I'm gonna have with them here on next time we have a work session in prior, because I'm gonna start with them and what, how they'd like to see changes. But I'm gonna then go to you guys to talk about, you know, how, if you all agree and how we want to do it. Might even do a joint one to get to that point. But the, the thought is, I've worked with a lot of communities with called form-based code, uh, and so I don't know if you guys know what form-based code is. Well, I'll bring you that maybe in a work session, we can talk about it when we talk about the design review. Because what it does is it really puts a kind of a prescriptive, uh, it's called prescriptive, uh, ordinance. And so, you, it's done by the forms of the building instead of really by the uses. And so, you're really kind of saying, you know, you can have these two or three different styles of building, and the, then you can even get into the materials or what sidings and stuff. And so, you're, you're, and especially as kind of restrictive as ours is, or, I mean, that district-wise, the geography-wise, it's only the commercial areas. So, I think it would be a perfect thing, and it would be much less subjective. It's much more objective, uh, standards. And, uh, and so that's gonna be my suggestion is maybe move towards that, and, and I've, I've had some experience working with that. So, that, that would be that DRB revision. Uh, we already talked about marijuana. Oh, tsunami comp plan and zoning updates. I figure at least the tsunami stuff, that would just go in when we redo the, um, comp plan. Right now, there's not the word tsunami even mentioned in our comp plan. Neither is earthquakes mentioned in our comp plan. Uh, so, there's a lot that needs to be done.
It's disappointing, I was just seriously haven't noticed, I was gonna head up to that blue line. Above the blue line on the top of my stack.
So, now, so I, I figure that can all be done during that process of that. So, uh, natural hazard mitigation updates, uh, Ma- uh, Mike Myers, our new emergency manager is doing that. How much of that's gonna fall into our bailiwick? I don't know how much yet, but I just put that on there, it's, that's kind of out there. Uh, if that does come through, that'll be probably, I think that's due to be completed like, maybe this time next year. So, it's not gonna be for long.
So, what are we talking in, in terms of natural hazard?
So.
Mountains that are gonna slide into us?
Yeah, landslide, earthquake, all those kind of things. They're doing kind of the Klatzach County Plan, and we're, ours is gonna be part of that. Every community's gonna have an element of that. And so, um, you know, are there things even, you know, will that trickle down into zoning or other areas? They may, so that's why I just put that in there as a, as a placeholder. Um, and then the plants list update. Uh, I've already asked, uh, three different landscapers and our tree person to update our plants list and kind of give us a new, uh, that would, it's been a while. In fact, there's two or three invasive species that are listed in our plants list, current plants list. So, I said we really need to change this. So, I've gotten their feedback, so I'd like to bring that to you fairly soon. I mean, it's, it's not a huge issue or priority, but it's something that we've already kind of gotten ready, and I could bring that before you guys. And I'd just like to bring before you guys to get your approval and design review board as well, so you both kind of get.
So, are you talking about, I mean, we updated it this past year too. Uh, we added big leaf maple and vine maple to the list that was already there. But are you talking about like cranial shrubbery, or are you talking about trees? Well, because there's nothing in there about, you know, shrubbery and that sort of thing, that's up to.
I'll have to look at that, the list you, I mean, the list I had, I think, had shrubs and stuff. I'll look at it.
I don't remember seeing anything with shrubbery.
I'll look at it.
I think that discussion was mostly just in terms of trees and substitution of trees, trees you had to cut down on.
Trees and cut down replacements. Are you guys talking about tree removal?
No, no, the, well.
There's a list on the tree removal of all of that.
Yes.
Just trees.
Yeah, but I don't remember seeing anything addressing shrubbery.
Yeah, I see, I think that.
I mean, I think all of that is ornamental plant material.
It's a separate.
Yeah, it's a separate list, yeah. It's a, and it's, it's, you know, the DRB uses it, uh, and it's also kind of referenced in the subdivision ordinance. Uh, so I, I figure we need to kind of look at that. And then, of course, the last thing is that Vision twenty twenty that we'll be doing. So, did you, anybody else have other things they wanted to bring up or talk about?
Well, I don't know, you know, I, I was thinking about this today. We don't have, I mean, Cannon Beach doesn't have an environmental quality commission like a lot of towns do. So, when things come up, like spraying Roundup in the community, things like that, where do you go for that? Where do you, where do you go, who do you talk to?
Well, so, I would think that, you mean to, if you, they wanted to be an ordinance on certain things that you can't, you don't use as chemicals or something like that? I would think that that's probably currently would be handled through a new ordinance. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know of anything in our current ordinance that has anything to do with that.
Yeah, I mean, when I came down here, it was, uh, the, the city could not use pesticides.
And that's still the case.
Yeah.
Right.
But as far as residential people, that's.
Right, like the other day, I walked by Stephanie Inn, and they were spraying something on the lawn right, um, right by the ocean, I mean, right face, you know, just like feet from the, from the beach. And I asked what they were doing, and they said, well, we're putting down herbicide. And I asked what it was called, and they said Solitaire. And I went and looked it up, and it has like horrible things associated with it. So, I mean, I, there's no one to call. I called, I called the state parks, but it's not there. It's not their bailiwick, because it's not, that's private property, it's not past vegetation. And I called, so finally, I called Stephanie Inn, and, um, the guy, the manager there said, well, he was just really surprised to hear it, and he believed that people who own Stephanie were very unhappy to know that their landscape people are using it. I don't know if that's true or not, you know, it's not, I mean, I, but I mean, I'm just saying, right on the oceanfront. I mean, you know, I'm.
I, I would, I can look into that, Lisa, I don't know, I, you know.
But I don't know who to call. I called Public Works to ask them, they sent me to State Parks.
Yeah, because we, yeah, we wouldn't have any, I, as far as I know, we don't have any ordinances about that. And so, it's, you know, especially.
I mean, is that such a terrible, I mean, I know that a lot of, you know, property rights people would be very pissed off about that. I do know that. But it's for the health of the community. I mean, there's irrefutable evidence now that something like Roundup is, you know, is carcinogenic. We know that, you know, so I don't understand why we can't regulate it.
So, diesel fuels.
Yeah, that's true, in fact, there are even more.
It's a big issue in Gerhardt, they've been, you know, at, at the Surf Pines, they were spraying Roundup, and a lot of people were upset. So, they went through a long process of trying to ban Roundup, uh, you know, the right-ofways and shoulders of where all, everyone lives.
Well, Elk were writing letters to the editor.
Yeah, 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 but.
What happened?
Well.
Were they able to do it?
Um, actually, I don't know how that, how it actually.
Sure, definitely, it's even resolved.
I, I know that the, the people that I knew that were going to the meetings, it was, they, they just, a lot of the people that were using it just ignored the advice of what really is happening with that herbicide. Um, and especially what's been happening with the, with the publicity that it's been getting, you know, in the last, last year.
We, it's like ignoring climate change. There's dumb people everywhere.
We had a, uh, we had a program, uh, in the, uh, Blaine County, in the Southern Valley area. It, but it was a program done by the Wood River Land Trust, and it was a Healthy Lawns Initiative. And so, they did a lot to promote and, you know, little fish in the lawn sign, little thing that if you were a trout-friendly, uh, community is what it was called. But anyhow, so I know there's those kind of efforts from like nonprofit side and stuff. I just don't know of any legislation, but I can ask, uh, Bill, and that he, that he probably have heard of if there's some, any issues.
Yeah, I'd love to hear.
Because it's private, you know, it's gotta be a private property thing.
To me, well, I know it is, but that, that's a big thing to me, just like the city, they're having plastic bags and plastic straws is also a big, a big issue too. So, that, a lot of towns have environmental quality commissions that deal with those things. We don't. So, I don't know what, where you go for, I mean, is that a planning commission thing to, to, to try and, I mean, I.
No.
Well, who else would it be?
It would, it would be to the city council, and if they would like to, just like you said, they probably would want to set up some kind of commission or something to, you know, oversee that kind of thing. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know if they would want to take that on themselves, but anyhow, it is something, like you said, with the straws and others, there's, there's other things. I know within, like zoning, you can have, we had in our industrial, uh, zoning in, um, both Idaho and Georgia, a list of, uh, you know, hazardous materials and things like that that couldn't, you know, you'd, couldn't use, uh, say in certain, in the watershed or whatever. So, there are ways to put, you know, put that into a zoning ordinance. But that's only going to be for the use of certain type of kind of dangerous chemicals or something you could classify. So, I mean, there's, I know there's models out there, I'm, I'm.
Well, I think Roundup is a dangerous chemical, and I think everyone knows that, so I don't.
It's just tough, I mean, it's a difficult thing to kind of enforce. And so, I think that's why I'd like to ask Bill, and, you know, if he's seen that.
We just need busybodies like me walking their dogs around the community, asking people questions.
So, did you guys any other things, uh, I'll follow up with that?
Well, I'm very concerned about the environment, that, that I'd like you to ask Bill, and I'd like you to see. And, and I think that should, maybe that's something that the council should consider, having an environmental quality commission.
Yeah.
It, it's not unusual.
Oh, no, no.
Well, there are two, two things that, that are kind of on my list, and one of them came about here in the last month or two. Two houses, the, the second house south of me has become a short-term rental. And they, there's not any street parking, and they have enough parking in their driveway to take care of that. But, uh, the previous owners that had been there for a number of years had floodlights that I didn't know they had.
Oh, no, now you do?
But they, they, and I did call, I did call the, the officers down here because they had six floodlights on the backside of their house that lit up the forest. So, if you're going down Pacific, it's sort of like, oh, didn't realize that. So, they talked to the folks, and I, so far, they haven't turned the lights on in, on the backside of the house because they reflect into my rooms. And, but the front, the front of the house, they also have floodlights. So, the canopy for that to be pointed down is not there. So, I went over and I talked to them, and they did shut the lights off. But it's sort of like, this is, you know, here's another example of intruding into your neighbors, especially in a place like mine where I'm renting rooms. Um, so, this, the short-term rental and the law enforcement people, uh, I mean, that's something that, that we're all gonna deal with, and we don't know when we're gonna have to deal with it. I mean, it's just gonna spring up.
Yeah.
There is a lighting ordinance though.
Yeah, there is, yeah, and they did say that. But the, the fixtures that they have is, is not adequate because it's up on the second story. So, that's coming in, you know.
Well, she'll, Jenny will look into that, have you reported it?
Well, I, yeah, they came down the next day, and they said, well, the officers came by and they, they didn't see the lights. Well, if you're on hemlock, you couldn't see them, you had to go over on Pacific because they flooded the west side of the house. Um, but also, I feel like I need to find out if, if that is, you know, the, truly a short-term rental because I will monitor the cars that are parked there uh, because it seems to me like there's certainly more than two different parties that are coming in in a fourteen-day period.
Okay, yeah. I, all I would suggest for everyone is, uh, is under our, um, police department, you'll see here, uh, under services, police department, you see code enforcement complaint. Click on that, refer people to this. Uh, we're gonna make it to where it'll also be on the front page, and so, but, uh, this is where you fill out your complaint form, and Jenny will, um.
Good.
Handle that. And we, we're referring everyone into, inside, uh, so, the departments, we report it through the same mechanism so that we can collect this data and we can use this data. Uh, but she'll follow up, uh, you'll see that, um, you can do it anonymously, but there's a kind of that stipulation that she can't really do, she can only do so much if you do it anonymously because we can't, we, we're making a case is what we're doing, we're building a case. And if you don't come, uh, forward and be a evident, uh, you know, or present your evidence, then that, that makes it a little less, uh, more difficult when we go before the municipal court usually.
Absolutely.
So, anyhow, uh, I do want everyone to know, uh, we're gonna be going before the city council when, once, uh, we have it on the front page, and then kind of doing a little awareness campaign to others on, this is out there. Okay? Uh, so, any, any other priorities that we might want to talk about for the coming year?
But, you know, it seems to me that one of the priorities for this town is, is to, uh, plan for, plan for future expansion, which I think dovetails into what happens when the big one hits, uh, to some extent. Is there any reason to plan for the future? And, uh, this is kind of philosophical, I suppose, and, um, but it would, it would be nice to have a sense of what is the maximum number of bodies we want to cram into this town on any given weekend? You know, I like to see that discussion out in the open, you know, with, with all the merchants and all the chamber commerce folk, uh, who, you know, are getting a lot of revenue out of the taxes on, on bodies showing up, and also, um, hear from how, how, how the community defined as the people who actually live here feel about what the maximum amount of bodies this town can actually deal with. It's gonna be higher than what is determined to be pretty flat-out the maximum. How we're going to expand to, to meet the needs that that creates.
Yeah, okay.
It's the idea that I've heard from people who live here all the time, that it seems that, that, that community, the town, the government of the town is more concerned about, um, pleasing tourists than it is about, and the businesses are more concerned about pleasing the tourists than they are about the well-being of the community itself, the people who live here.
And the quality of life.
Right, so that's secondary, and, and primarily is how to get more and more people in here and to make them happy.
So, I, you know.
And take their money.
I really think that that is why I'm going to push more for the, you know, kind of this transportation parking study because that at least shows you, like you said, what is the, how much can we hold at least in cars, which can then kind of calculate out how many you could actually have. Uh, I don't even want to call it comfortably, but how much would have, be able to hold? But then, um, you know, then you can start looking at kind of what are those different scenarios and models? Because that is a much, a, a lot of the driver of A, you know, what is the ratio of short-term rental to long-term rental to, uh, full-time residences, second homes? You know, what is it right? You know, what is it right now, where we wanna get to and how does that affect those parking numbers as well? And so I think we can kind of start looking at that, but until I have better information on that, I can't really model that too well. So that's one of my main goals, but the other is the visioning. Because right now, a lot of what you're talking about is bringing the community consensus. And it doesn't seem like to me that that's really been done in 20 years. And so I think there's, you know, we're kind of piecemealing things as we go along. What does, you know, what does community mean to this community? You know, that's, that's what a vision does.
Well, I think, you know, we already have a model for possession. That's the original comprehensive plan. You know, where much attention was given to, you know, how many houses, how many units in a particular, you know, neighborhood or not, how many units per acre, that, those kind of statistics. And it was clear in that comprehensive plan writing, right up, that the discussion was one of making for openness and comfortable environments and control of heights, that sort of thing. And the, the direction now, nationwide, as you're very much aware of, is just the opposite. How can we squeeze more bodies into less space? And, and, and we can go to just about any urban area in this country to find out how the citizens of the community feel about what that's done to their neighborhoods and their shopping areas, their, their community.
Yeah, well.
You know, and this, this stuff is all very, you know, focused. And I, I think that, that, you know, the vision aspects of this process is, is nebulous, but also more important than all of these little details.
So would you guys have a preference of what you all wanna do next? I mean, is there a, a top priority or how you wanna go through these?
Well, listen to what Joe says. I think that the vision is really important and I, and for me, and, and also affordable housing, that's a top priority. Because that also intersects with the idea of, you know, zoning and what we want the community to look like and do we want, you know, what we really want. Because I have to say, I often feel like there are economic interests that come in under the guise of caring about affordable housing in the community or caring about, you know, workforce housing. And actually, it's, we saw it already, you know, it's something that was turned down actually, where it, there was absolutely no way to, to monitor that it actually would be affordable housing, nothing, nothing. It could, they could have been, they could have ended up doing anything they wanted, yet they wanted zoning changes.
Right.
You know, and, and I just, I don't know. I mean, I think it's very hard to separate economic interest from, you know, but I think it's pretty clear when.
I think you need an ordinance. I mean, cause, cause that, like you said, they're gonna push and push and push.
They are gonna push hard.
And, yeah.
And they're gonna, and they're gonna get the whole community, you know, feeling like they're being politically incorrect or there's something wrong with them because they don't want, I don't think anybody is against the idea of having affordable housing. It's just that what is the cost? It's for, you don't have to, you don't have to make big tall buildings to do it. You don't have to get rid of parking to do it. There's lots of creative ways to do it. I've seen it done in other cities. So, you know.
I mean, this short-term that came on to my place, it's, it, it was all economics because the house didn't sell, you know, for two years or however long. And so, okay, well, at least I can make some.
Make some money. Okay, so, or is everyone, you know, if, I'm happy to move into affordable here soon. Like I said, I might do a couple little minor ones just to, I'm.
Paying fruit back, please.
Yeah, the, like the, some of the things we, we've mentioned here, you know, that I'm not that comfortable with, at least maybe, and I'm gonna talk these over with kind of your own priorities with Bill and say, you know, what do you think as well? But I'm, I'm, you know, I, I think affordable is probably, what I hear is, you know, if it's not that, it's parking, but we can't really do parking until we get, see, find out about the grant. So, you know, to me, I think affordable would be probably the next big one that I would also.
And short-term rental procedures, like definitions of things. There's no definition of what a bread and breakfast is.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So that's, that, that's what I kinda put under the accessory dwelling language. So, yeah, that's, that's another one of those kind of low-hanging ones that I'd like to.
My understanding was accessory building, besides townhouse, garden house, that sort of thing, was that if they, that they couldn't have a full kitchen, that.
That's a guest house.
That, what's that?
That's a guest house.
Guest house?
Yeah.
We just need definitions. We don't have them.
And so, yeah, so I'm happy maybe we'll do that one also as kind of a minor one.
The bottom of the list is marijuana zoning for me.
Or even, should it be on the list?
I don't think.
You can just, yeah, just. Place it on a priority.
But, but I also think I would like to see some kind of, I like to have some discussion about things like using Roundup, that kind, you know, all those kinds of things, environmental quality. I don't know, like you said, it's not part of the planning commission thing, but I'd like to know, I'd ask you to put it on your priorities to talk to Bill about how that works.
I will, yeah. And so if we.
I, I was gonna say, Kurt Anderson was the one that, when I first came down here, was the one that was telling me about, you know, you can't use herbicide, you know, the Japanese.
That's the city, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the city can't.
But I mean, I kind of wondered how that came about because I wasn't down here for how that came into being that they.
But I, I wanna make it for private property owners because like hotels can use them.
Right, right.
So I would suggest that.
Last time I go over their lawn with my dog.
Likely we will be.
Thank you.
We will be busy with events and outdoor merchandising, probably, I would say, just, I would just say till July. Okay, so June or July is when I'm hoping we'll get through there. So then, I would say maybe August we'll get into the accessory dwelling. That's not to say that I also won't be kind of possibly bringing minor, other minor things. But then, then September, maybe we'll shoot for September to start looking at the affordable housing or the fall, we'll start looking at affordable housing. And then, like I said, the visioning would likely start around the first of the year. So that's probably a pretty good schedule for the coming year.
So you go through this list and each and every one of these has an impact on.
Interdependent.
What you, what this vision 2020, you know, is about. And I, I think it's sort of back-assward to, to start worrying about the small stuff, not knowing what the community really wants to see. And I, you know, and you can say that, you know, you know, the committee, you know, the community wants something done about parking or affordable housing, but what? You know, and how?
Yeah, and so I think the visions, like I said, is about a 30,000-foot level where you guys wanna go as a community. These are gonna be much more focused kind of discussions on each one of these areas because you're getting into zoning ordinances. And so, like I said, we're only gonna be tackling at the most three, probably two before we get to the vision. So I, I think that the affordable housing discussion, it's gonna come in the visioning, yes. It's coming every priority session I've set through here is one of the top two, three priorities is affordable housing. So we know that's gonna be one of the top of the vision. How they do that, you guys will start shaping that over the coming year. To say that's gonna be what you end up with at the end, no, I, I don't believe that. I know that every community I've worked in, affordable housing is something that is ever-evolving, ever-changing. It's one of those things that, and I'll bring these materials to you and I'll show you links to ones that are being done around the state and around the nation. These housing studies, you know, some communities, they take seven or eight different things to get what, to the, and that's everything from a new zoning ordinance to trying to work with the local communities and local stakeholders to get a nonprofit going, to start working on foundation money. You know, there's different tools in the toolbox to get these kind of things to work in a, in a community. It's a hard thing to do. So, but there's, you know, there's great towns out there that are, you know, they're up to like 600, 1,000 units of workforce affordable housing now and, you know, they've struggled and taken many different steps to get there.
But they're not caught between an ocean, you know, and the cougars.
Yeah, they are. They're, they're caught between a mountain that goes straight up, just like your ocean does. There, there's communities that have the same footprint that you have. I've worked in, in the Mountain West. I was working in one in the, on Georgia coast, surrounded by water, the military base to the north. I'll bring in the map. But they have to deal with, they're all over the place they're having to deal with this. This is a huge issue everywhere along the coast. So it, you're not inventing the will. And, and yes, these communities are faced with many of the same challenges and that's what I want you guys to realize. This is nothing new. This has been going on for 30 years, these communities are trying to figure this out.
Well, it's, it seems to me a little desperate in Cannon Beach when the city goes ahead, buys land that is unusable for its purpose.
I'm sorry, I wasn't.
I know, you weren't here, you know?
You're talking about Southwind?
Yes. And it seems to me that the, that geology of this city's location has a whole lot of limitation on what you can do. And the, the characteristics of the city, the, the, the quote charm of the city and the area is, is what drives its affordability.
Yeah, I, I think, I totally agree. Geography is not gonna get any better. It's, it's difficult. But, you know, a lot of communities are, struggle with their geography as well. They have a lot of the same issues. And so it's unique, but it doesn't mean that you can't try different tools to, you know, at least, you know, at least help some, you wanna build a strong community, you gotta have, you gotta have a little bit of everyone here. And, you know, you can't expect everyone that's going to be serving the food and cooking the food and, you know, to drive an hour and a half. They're just not gonna do that. And we may not be able to solve it. That's the other thing. It's a regional approach. We may not be able to solve it all here, but we've got land at the junction. There's land at Seaside, there's land in Warrington, and we have to work with them and we have to work to the south as well to, to bridge those gaps. We may not expect them to drive an hour and a half, but hey, they can drive 45 minutes. And so let's try to, you know, try to solve that with our fellow communities. Cause there, I just was in a planning meeting last week with the others and yeah, this is, all of them are talking about this, all of them. So that's one of the reasons why I also think it's a great time to be moving forward this because that Klatzner Housing Study is now complete. Everyone's gonna wanna do something to try to figure this out. And so I really think that's a, an opportune time to get this going.
Okay, do we wanna close this portion up?
Yeah.
Okay. On the tree report, I just wanted to mention that the city is really falling down when it comes to issuing tree permits. In my neighborhood, within the last three months, actually just a week and a half was a little Arbor Care demand. And I thought, what are they doing? And so they pull into the complexes, the condominiums that are next to me, west of me, and they cut down a flowering cherry tree that's in full bloom. And, and there's this flowering cherry tree, the, the trunk comes up about two feet and then it spreads out into branching, but it's, it was a mature landscape tree that needed to be in this complex. And then next to that on separate property is a, a, a house that's been on the market. And they go in and they cut down red cedar. And I'm thinking, you know, who issued that permit? Then further north in the 3,800 block on Hemlock, there's a new house that's being built. And, and I talked to the neighbors and they were upset because they came to the city and they said, you know, they cut down this tree that's, that we really want to keep, but they said, no, the way the driveway is coming out, they're gonna cut that down. But they cut down the tree, but they left the stump. And then there's another tree, a fir, that's next to the driveway that comes into the garage. And they left that tree, but they cut several roots on, on, on the Hemlock side and the driveway side. And I'm thinking, in, in a big storm, that's gonna come down. Then city manager built a new house and obviously there were trees.
Public works tractor.
Yeah, it was, it was a, a lot of trees on the lot. They had to cut those down to, to build that house. But then the house is built and then they come in to pave into the driveway and there's a big Sitka spruce that they cut down after that, which did not need to be cut down. So I'm very upset with the fact that, that, that people are issuing these permits and they're not going out, particularly when they're building a house and, you know, we, you know, going over, you know, how can we save this, this tree or not save it? And then the idea that, okay, now we've already built, but we're gonna put in this and so now we're gonna cut down that. I feel like there's no, there's no, nobody really is concerned about the trees that are being cut down and there's not any pre-thought to issuing these permits. So to me, I just feel like the city is really falling down.
Well, I will, I'll, I'll look into it because I, I don't think so. I, I've seen plenty, I've been out site visit after site visit and come to the determination that we had to, and, and you can read any of the reports for each one of those. And so I'll be happy to.
Will, let's get together, yeah.
Yeah, come in tomorrow and we'll talk about it. Cause I do think that, you know, if it's an issue, not to say that the new ordinances will help out, that's, that's for sure.
Well, in this case with the, with the, the three condominiums or the three condominiums and the one house, I mean, that flowering cherry tree was part of the landscape plan initially there. And why it's cut down, to me, it's only because the new owners of one of the condos there wanted more light. But there was no, for me, there was absolutely no reason to cut down.
Well, like I said, come in tomorrow, we'll look at each one of those. But, but these are, these are definitely things that, you know, I, I want, if you see something happening, call, complain, do something, you know, get ahold of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause that's in our comprehensive plan.
Well, I mean, I mean, in this case, they're driving up and they've got the chainsaws out. I mean, within an hour's time, everything was gone.
Do you think they had a permit for it?
Well, that's what I wanna find out.
Yeah, I think we need to find that out.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, Darryl, come in, we'll get the addresses and look at those, okay?
Okay. Any other ongoing items, or go to the order?
I would just advise you guys, and, and I'll try to make note that when we have these kind of the planning commission topics that are going to the city council, or if there's a work session that you, you guys might be interested in, I'll try to make note of that so that Jill gets you guys information on this as well. I, like I said, uh, well, we will have a science workshop with Sally Hacker, possibly Dr. Allen to kick off the ordoon. Uh, that was supposed to be in June, but they canceled that, and so that won't be till September. But we'll let you guys know that as well.
So they're bringing back in, are they bringing those people back in?
Yeah, well, they'd like to have them present the report and the science of the grass stabilization stuff, so. Yeah.
Okay.
I have one, one more thing. There's a duplex on Hemlock that now has a little sign on it, that it's a thirty-day.
Yeah, yeah, that's Nicholson.
Right, just right down here?
Not the Nicholson that you guys are thinking of.
Oh, different.
But the other Nicholson that we.
That we like so much?
No, the one that was, uh, caught violating the short-term rental, uh, without.
So is that a valid?
Yeah, yeah, it's long-term rental, our term for long-term rental is over thirty days, right?
Okay.
Which, you know, and, and we're gonna have to keep an eye on that, though.
Okay.
But they did put the sign on the tree, which is illegal, so we've got on them about that.
Okay, good, so you're aware.
But they're gonna cut it down, aren't they?
Yeah, it's in the lake. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn.
All right.
The council meetings are on, one day of the week, I can never forget, Monday.
Yeah, well.
What?
The council meetings.
Tuesday.
Tuesdays. Tuesdays. Oh, there are sometimes, I thought.
Most attended.
There was something on Monday recently.
They're meeting quite frequently, but Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yeah, Tuesday, Wednesday usually.
Oh, sometimes I can be on Tuesday, Wednesdays I can always be here.
Yeah, they've been doing the city hall discussions on Wednesday.
And then the budget starts.
Yeah, budget starts.
Okay.
This coming.
But the actual meetings are on Tuesdays?
Tuesdays. The first Tuesday is the business meeting, and the second Tuesday is the work session.
Is there gonna be a discussion of short-term housing within the new city council, city office building?
Good point.
I have a class on the state of action. I think it's gonna be. I'm a perpetual student.
That's good. So Joe Phillips is, is doing okay?
Well, she can't, at least for another two weeks, she can't use her right arm.
Okay.
And she's pretty right-handed.
We have a short arm.
She came from, you know, some meetings she shouldn't have had to go to. And walked into the house, and I was on the telephone with the best friend from Lincoln, Nebraska. She knew who I was talking to, and so she picked up the phone and started walking down the hallway front door to the kitchen, got to the area, transitions into the kitchen, and was talking away and was distracted and just tripped on her athletic shoes. And whacked her shoulder really good and displaced her shoulder and, you know, broke the upper arm bone in three places. So she's sort of under the weather.
Pretty painful, the shoulders.
Well, and the guy. We got the rescue squad, and they took her to Seaside, which was, you know.
Budgets should be out this coming.
You know, I was behind them, and I should have just, you know, said, get the hell out of here, we're going to.
I guess volume one, I'm gonna stay over there.
Yeah, I just wanted, you know, to put a pain bit away. She ended up in Seaside, the physician at the emergency room. Said, well, you know.
Yeah.
I, I have.
I thought this.
We're gonna have five or six.
Replaced shoulders before. And, uh, so, she's, she, you know, yanked on, twice yanked on. Her arm, which was broken, you know.
I'll look through and see if I.
I've heard so many terrible stories about Seaside, I'm telling you, really, it's like a nightmare.
And, well, he should have been in it. So, the only good thing about it is that she used enough anesthesia.
I'm interested to see now if we do get these five or six.
Riding up to Portland and handling this.
And how that plays out, you know, over a year or two.
Fighting all the bumps in twenty-six. It was, it's, in the last month, it's just been an absolute nightmare. Between, you know, idiots and, and we, you know, the only, the only bed that was available in Portland was at Adventist Hospital, which I don't recommend to anybody.
Really? Providence is the best, isn't it?
St. Vincent's is great.
Is St. Vincent's the one by, on Barnes Road?
Right, yeah, yeah, it's a good hospital.
They were fabulous, they were fabulous.
Well, there, there are others that are.
Right.
The one on Lovejoy is pretty good, isn't it?
Good, is that a good Sam?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a pretty good thing, it's about that one, too.
Does she have to have another operation?
Well, that's, you know, we went to the, the surgeon that did the emergency operation, and he didn't like the looks of the x-rays, so he had some more images taken, CT scans taken, so he could see better, and, and said, well, I'm sorry, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't look good. Because the top of the, the, yeah, what's the name of that bone, I can't remember. Top, the top of the upper, upper arm that goes into the socket didn't stay placed the way he placed it during the surgery, and it's kind of tweaked out and caught on the edge of the socket, and, and we don't know, you know, since, since that two weeks out, imagery came, and we don't know.